Welcome, everybody, to the March 12 St. Charles County Council Meeting. I'd like to start the meeting off with an invocation from Pastor Steve Parks from the Bible Baptist Church. Everybody, please rise and we'll follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Shall we pray? Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've given to us, the health that we have. And, Father, we pray for this meeting tonight. We thank you for these who serve our community. We ask for wisdom on their behalf, Father, for them as they consider the issues that they must weigh out tonight. We pray, Lord, for, again, your hand upon our county, for prosperity of this community, but also for our safety and our growth. And, Lord, I ask that you be with, again, with these gentlemen, and we know they have concerns outside of the items on this agenda in their own homes and their lives, and we pray, Father, for wisdom in their personal lives as well. Again, we ask your blessing upon St. Charles County, and we will give you the praise and honor for the things that are accomplished, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Joe Cronin.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brazel.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Ehlum.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Hollander.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Klinghammer. Councilmember John White.
Here.
Next, we have a conditional use permit, 4540, and I don't believe we're ready to move forward with that, so we'll leave that on the table. And that's followed by condition, or bill number 4570, and I need a motion to remove that from the table, please.
So moved.
Holo's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And now I'm going to read the title. An ordinance granting conditional use permits CUP 17-14 for, one, a winery, and, two, buildings, structures, or open spaces for conducting weddings and/or wedding receptions or other private parties to Deviance Ridge Vineyards LLC property owners and Charles Gilentine applicant.
I'd like to make a motion to amend bill number 4570 and replace it with substitute bill 4570. Second. Okay. Any discussion, please?
No, we just had some conversation about the music, about being during the week, and so it was limited to nine o'clock on weekdays, and on the holidays is still, what, 11 o'clock? And I think that was the only concern that we could control with this particular application.
Okay. I'd also like to mention that there is an Exhibit C that's with that substitute bill that covers what you just talked about. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to thank the folks for the winery for considering, and Mr. Weber for considering letting the folks get a little bit more rest on weekdays. I think your neighbors will be very happy with that, and I appreciate you working with us to get through this. Thank you.
Okay. All in favor of the substitute bill?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Do you please read it?
Substitute bill number 4570, an ordinance granting conditional use permits CUP 17-14 for, one, a winery, and, two, building, structures, or open spaces for conducting weddings and/or wedding receptions or other private parties to Deviance Ridge Vineyards LLC property owners and Charles Gilentine applicant. Councilmember Cronin.
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel.
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander.
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
That bill passes. We'll move on to public comment. Do we have any speakers tonight?
Arnie Deanoff.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of council, Arnie AC Deanoff, public advocate and county resident. If you please pay homage and pray with me for a great Missourian who gave his life on the short earth of 30 years of age. City of Clinton police officer Chris Ryan Morton of Henry County lost his life last Tuesday in the line of duty. I ask that you all pray with him, with his family, and with the men and women of the Clinton and Henry County Sheriff's Department. The next thing I'd like to talk about is on the consent agenda. Again, we're not shopping in the SCC. You're buying three Ford Escapes from a Columbia dealership, Joe Mokins, and not providing the St. Charles County dealerships the business, the people who employ our neighbors and who drive our economy right here at St. Charles County. Makes no sense. We gave the other dealerships at the last meeting a number of vehicle purchases, but for some reason, the county executive and the county police chief with the purchasing director feel that we're going to go to Columbia, Missouri, and give Boone County the money rather than St. Charles County. Makes no sense. The animal pet shelter that's also on your agenda has been tabled, $214,000. There are much, much better methods that could be used, including using our in-house facilities department to do the work and purchase some materials and hardware locally. I'm also against spending $385,261.66 in more chasing with our federal, state, county, and county road sales tax funds. We're wasting taxpayer dollars. When will the bills come to a halt for the Gateway Greenlight Program? We keep spending millions. We're now over the $9 million mark over the last four to five years. Our county is fiscally conservative. We're not big on government handouts and wasteful programs that come from the federal government and East West Gateway Coordinating Council. We're now over the $9 million mark on this project. The county, the state senate is right now discussing Senate Bill 619, which will cut taxes to 6 million Missourians, while we at the county level continue to raise taxes and look for ways to generate more money from taking from the 425 good residents of St. Charles County's pocketbooks. And finally, I'd like to share with you a letter that was given to me, or sent to me by Mr. Drew Heffner, the Associate County Counselor, in for my request for first-day filing elections for the Tuesday, August 7, 2017 primary election. All files for all offices elected county through Friday, March 2, 2017 at 5:00 p.m. and the office department policy that is written for the release of election office filers, including a blank declaration of election candidacy. This letter that was obtained from Mr. Heffner is ridiculous, saying it's going to take 14 days or two weeks to comply with the sunshine law. Can I summarize, please, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, your time's up. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Gerald Keven.
I'll hold off until my vote comes in.
Okay. Let's move on to oral report from the county executive.
I believe I'm going to, yeah, Mary is going to make a presentation.
Welcome, Mary.
Thank you. Good evening. I appreciate this opportunity to give you just a little update about what the communications department is doing. I have a couple of videos that I wanted to show. The first one is starting. Maybe it's not.
I thought you broke into song.
I couldn't see.
She's very excited about that video.
So that's the way the first one starts. This is a new series that we have called My County, and the video department put this together for you, so, okay, now you can play it. Batter up, hear that call, the time has come for one and all to play ball.
I'm Tony Smith. I'm 96 years old, and I tried out for the All-American Girls Professional Baseball. I played softball ever since I was in grade school, I guess. When we moved from Garden Prairie to St. Charles, softball was what they had. That was the thing coming up, so I went into that. Our church sponsored it, St. Charles Bar Mail. They had the uniforms, they had the coaches and manager, and it lasted one year. And then we went on to other teams, various other teams in the county and in St. Charles, and I just traveled the county all the time. My coaches heard about it, and they trained us in St. Charles in the Moose Building every day, Sundays included, five hours a day, so that we could be in pretty good shape when we got down there. So there were three from St. Charles that went down to Passagulla, Moss Point, Mississippi, which is now in the Gulf of Mexico. And one of them was a pitcher, one was a left-handed first baseman, and I was the catcher. The only one that really stayed was the pitcher, Mary Maratti, and she's in the Hall of Fame in New York now. Then we had to go to an army barracks. That's where we lived. We would get up in the morning and have breakfast, then we would do Calisthenics for an hour, then we would play ball till noon, then we would have lunch, do Calisthenics again for another hour, play ball till 5:00, go home and take a shower, get dressed up to go to that dinner, and then to the baseball school at night, three hours every night. They would tell you which hand to eat with and all that good stuff. I used either one. So that was one thing. And the book on your head, and I mean, your head and your shoulders back and straight, when you walk and hold your arms straight and let them sling a little. That was a miss. I signed for 75 a week, and I got paid 50. And I got paid that 50 for three weeks, and I finally got around the secretary to get to the manager, Mr. Carey. And I told him, I said, "I can go back to St. Charles and sling shoes back in Missouri and make a lot more than what I'm making here." I said, "What's the deal?" He says, "Well, the, some of the better ones, the better players, we have to give that money to them and then keep them going from one team to another, so we have good teams and draw good crowds." And I thought, "Well, you don't need me." He says, "Well, your ticket to St. Louis will be done in the morning." And when they did that, I said, "Well, I'm going home." It was on a Sunday night, and they asked me if I would consider going into the St. Charles County Hall of Fame, and I was so shocked, I dropped the phone first. And I picked it up, and I said, "Are you still there?" And they said, "Yes." I said, "Well, I am so shocked." I said, "Yes, I would." And I was inducted into the St. Charles County Hall of Fame, the first woman inductee in 1987. To me, it was very important. I'm Tony Smith. That's my story, and this is my county.
The second video is, has to do with our new Parks Quest, sorry. We started that program last year and kind of revamped it this year. We've already got 200 kids who have signed up to go around and explore county parks, and so this is a video that we've used on social media to spread the word.
Are you ready for an adventure? The Parks Quest 2018 is just what you're looking for. So how does it work? Simple. First, register online and learn how to play at SCCMO.org/parksquest2018. Then, visit the youth activity park, Historic Daniel Boone Home, or the Heritage Museum to pick up your Master Tracker. Are you ready for an adventure? The Parks Quest 2018 is just what you're looking for. So how does it work? Simple. First, register online and learn how to play at SCCMO.org/parksquest2018. Then, visit the youth activity park, Historic Daniel Boone Home, or the Heritage Museum to pick up your Master Tracker. Next, go be active. Complete activities at different county parks to gain stickers and codes to enter to win prizes. The more activities you do, the more chances to win. Entering is easy. Just take a picture of your Master Tracker and email it to parksquest@SCCMO.org. Parks Quest Challenge ends September 4, 2018, so register today so you don't miss out on this awesome adventure.
So I gave you a packet, and you'll see some of the information about Parks Quest in there, and also a passport that we're doing this year so that people, adults and kids, can keep track of where they go in the parks and write down the things that they like to do there. You'll also see our new annual report, Report to the Community, that is being dropped to 160,000 households this week, and a business informational business brochure that Molly Dempsey is going to be taking out to some of the new businesses when they have ribbon cuttings and to get information out about our county. So there are some other things in your packet that you might want to take a look at, too. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
One other thing, Mr. Chairman, as all, as everybody knows, we had some really good news last week with the fact that Amazon is going to be coming to St. Peters and St. Charles County. We will be, John, when is the road board meeting next week?
Third Wednesday this month.
Yeah, yeah. St. Peters will be, will be asking, asking for $2.6 million, which will be half of the cost to go ahead and put additional lanes in the road, on the road in front of where this facility is going to be, as well as do stoplights and make some improvements to the intersection. I will be supporting that. We hope that the, that the road board proposes it to you, and we certainly hope that you'll, that you'll approve it. If you have any questions, you know, before we get to the last minute, please, please let us know. As soon as we get the formal application, we'll send you a copy of it.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the consent agenda, are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, if the rest of the council would like to talk about the Gateway Greenlight Program expenditures, I got a little information from me and a Brower today I could summarize, if you want. Want to remove it? Make a motion to remove it?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. How about a motion to approve the remaining items? Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda.
Second.
Holo's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Okay. Go ahead and cover the item.
I, you know, I just was a little concerned about the overall cost of this, $380,000 in the three projects, so I wanted a little background, and Amanda was kind enough to pass that information on to me. And essentially, these, this expenditure is going to be 80% funded by CMAC grants, so in reality, it's going to cost the county $75,000, $76,000, something like that. But this will be a reoccurring cost that we can expect about $400,000 every year, because this is actually one quarter of the amount of work that needs to be done to these road projects about once every four years. So, you know, we can expect to see this again every year, and it's necessary to keep the project rolling. It's all great as long as we keep getting CMAC funding, which Amanda thinks we're going to continue to get that, because that, almost $400,000 worth of expense will be reduced to approximately $80,000, because this project is designed, the CMAC is congestion mitigation and air quality, and this project has, this project is designed to mitigate congestion and improve air quality. That being said, it's a lot of engineering, and I don't know all the details of the engineering, but if this is going to be re-incurring cost over and over for the county, the only thing I would suggest is maybe that the Transportation Department look at what it would take to take our, have our own engineer do this, or hire a new engineer just to do work on Gateway Greenlight. That might be a consideration to look at. So, you know, if, as long as it's $80,000 a year, it's something that the county's probably going to be well able to fit in a budget, but if the CMAC funding does not go through and the price drops, drops, jumps to $400,000 a year, then maybe it's, makes sense to take a look at doing some of that engineering in-house. And that's pretty much everything that I found out today, and I thank Amanda for filling me in on the information.
Okay. Can I have a motion on that? Oh, go ahead.
We'll take a look at that. Good idea.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Holo's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next item is bills for introduction, bill number 4572.
Bill number 4572, request by Michael Herbert, sponsored by Mike Klinghammer, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A Agricultural District to RR Single Family Residential District as per application RZ 1801.
Any discussion? Hearing none. We'll move on to bill 4573.
Bill number 4573, request by Michael Herbert, sponsored by Joe Brazel, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A Agricultural District to C2 General Commercial District as per application RZ 1802.
Any discussion on that?
I got some questions. Is Mike here, Robert, or?
I can help.
Okay. Could you come up here, please? What exactly is a history on this piece of property? Because it's been kind of confusing for a lot of people. One reason I don't think that there's been anybody showing up for this, or besides the applicant, the people who live there, is because it was, most of it was built before the zoning permission, and that's what's confusing to me. So how did this, tell me how this thing progressed to where it is today?
You mean this particular property?
Yes.
The Keven property? I don't know the specifics of that. I just know in the master plan, it shows this property is future commercial, and next door, it's zone commercial, and it's near the, of course, the intersection of D and Highway DD. And there's a, there's a house there now that I understand, but Mr. Keven owns three adjoining lots, two of them are zone commercial now, one of them is zone, this one's not zone commercial. So combined, they would be about eight acres, I believe, and he's indicated he's looking to consolidate the zoning for his lots for, potentially for future redevelopment.
Well, it's going to be a storage lot, right? Mr.?
Can I talk?
Yeah, come on up here, if you want to.
You don't have to start it now.
Don't have to do that? Okay.
It's not a conditional use, so you're good.
Okay, okay. As far as, we're looking at trying to get the C2 zoning. Previously, what we ended up doing is getting a, because we, it was a big hole that was there, so we got a grading permit to actually be able to bring dirt in, to start filling it up. Two, like, I'm sorry, whatever his name was, but there was, I have two lots that are, that are zone C2 at this particular time, one in this particular lot that has a house on does not have the C2, and that's what I'm trying to get, that C2 zoning.
So is the zoning, the commercial lot that you're, the storage lot, you're, I think, is a terrible use for that property, because you're right, you're a prime corner, you're DN double D, and by storing a bunch of RV, we did, I did get a lot of calls on it. If Mike was here, he would verify that, but we, I couldn't understand how that project started without you going through this process. That's what I don't understand.
I got a grading permit to bring dirt into that facility.
Yeah, but you gravelled the lot.
No, no. That is not gravelled, that is fill, fill from, I believe that was from Kenstra Concrete down here. I think there are BMs, I'm sorry, BMC Stone, that was the old Lafarge down on Upper Bottom Road, maybe is what that's called, I believe. So that is bad concrete, if you will, that was taken out of concrete trucks, put to the side, and then we put that there, just to be able to have some kind of a base to be able to haul the dirt in for the grading.
I think the confusing part is, though, you put in your berms, you put in your tree, it's actually preceded like this was already a permission for you to have, and I'm going to tell you right now, I got a lot of calls on this, because no one could understand how you could be putting a storage lot on a prime corner like that and store a bunch of equipment and trailers and stuff, and I don't think it's a good use for this property at all. I mean, this is a DN double D, and I wish Mike was here, because him and I had a lot of conversations on this, and I think that they put, did they give you a stop work order on this project?
No, I have full permits, Joe. It's not like I don't have the permits to do exactly what I'm doing. I have, for the berms that are there, they were approved for those berms.
But you don't have the zoning, though, to do this storage lot, correct?
That is correct. I have the permits to do exactly what I'm doing, put up berms, put up trees, and fill the property with soil or dirt or something to that nature to be able to get the land to where it's a usable, flat piece of dirt. But I'll, as far as, one of the things I would like to come back in and apply for a special use permit for outdoor storage. However, my thought process, I'll go with my thought process here, is that I wanted to see if there was anybody at the planning and zoning meeting, anybody at county council meetings, that I could write their names down and actually visit with them for the C2. I haven't seen anybody at planning and zoning. I don't see anybody here tonight that's against it. Doesn't mean that there's not, but I would like to at least be able to get the chance to be able to meet them. The other thing why we had, when we were going to fill it in with dirt, and why I applied to get berms and be able to put trees in, was, so most people in, can't visually see what something can look like, and so I thought, well, let's get the trees in, and then if somebody wants to come in and complain that they don't want it, well, then that would give me a chance. If nobody shows, there's a lot of the trees that aren't there. I wasn't able to get trees this past fall, just because it was so dry, and the guys were like, "We can't dig them, the balls will fall apart." However, the holes are there, they're ready to go in, and that was the part to where I thought, you know, well, maybe I'll let these, the trees grow up and totally screen this particular area if people were coming in here. But if they don't show up, my plan was to continue on for a special use permit in the near, near coming future. However, you know, that's why I wanted to go this route, to try the C2 zoning, to be able to work with anybody that did come up.
Mr. Keven, the fact of the matter is, is there are a lot of people that did call, because you tore down all them big trees. because you tore down all them big trees and you started, whatever you call it, it's gravel to me, but if you call it crushed concrete, doesn't matter. Everybody assumed that it was a permissive use. And I called, I don't know, Donna and Carol, and we had tons of complaints. And I called, I didn't talk to you, Robert, but I talked to Mike. And we were trying to figure out, and then somebody said, the guy, the houses that are in front, like way back there now, but they're exposed now because all the trees are gone, they're, they're very upset about it. And we had a hard time explaining why the project was started without this process. And so I, I don't think this is a good use of the property right on that corner. I really don't. It doesn't make any sense to put a storage unit between a firehouse and the gas station and collect a bunch of junk on it.
Hold, hold, can I stop you there? That's not where it's at, Joe.
It's right there in the intersection.
No, 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 it's not. No, is there any way to pull up a picture of the intersection? It's not between the, the gas station and the fire station. It's on the opposite side.
On the other side.
The opposite side of the fire station.
There are a row of houses there and everything. But anyway, go ahead, Joe, you can ask questions.
Mr. Keven built one of these right down the hill from my home. And I remember the discussion then with Wayne Anthony back in those days. And Robert, I've got a question for you regarding this. But if I'm reading this right, he's already owns three lots there that are zone commercial. He's asking for his commercial zoning for one more lot. Is that correct? Is that how we're reading this right? So the whole parcel would be commercial?
He owns, uh.
I'm sorry, come on.
Two lots.
Currently that are zone commercial.
Right.
And this is an adjoining third lot that's not.
So this would basically change into zoning, all we're, all they're, all that's brought to us tonight is changing the zoning on the lot that's next to his other two lots, correct? Right?
Right.
Okay. And then the second thing, I remember Wayne Anthony telling me specifically, Wayne Anthony said, the storage facilities like the type that Mr. Keven runs, okay, were a permissive use, and they called it a transitional use for commercial property. Because I remember the, the one he built on from my home, and it's a nice, no problems in the neighborhood, it's a nice facility. But I remember him saying that was a commercial property, but storage lots were considered a good transitional fit for commercial property. Is that still the policy of the county, community government?
I don't know if it's a policy, but it is true. A lot of times in areas where there isn't sewer service, uses, commercial uses will be developed that don't really need sewer service. And so until, until sewer service is extended, sometimes use like this is, can be a transitional use for something that's more intensive to come along later. That's true.
So, so I get, so I get this straight. It's, a storage facility would be a permitted use in the C2 zoning?
No, it would be a conditional use. So if, should this zoning be approved, anyone wanting to do a storage lot would need to come before this body again for a conditional use permit. But having said that, any of the permitted uses, that whole range of permitted uses that are allowed by right, could be permitted on this property without a conditional use permit.
I understand, okay.
I'm sorry.
Is it being used right now as a storage lot?
So there's nothing there now, just the rock fill that you brought in?
I recently, with the, the grading permit also, we were able to take down two houses that, two houses that people complained about in the past. We took down four junker buildings at the same time. So six buildings came, came down at this particular spot. But I will tell you that my sister owns the quick shop at the corner. And as, as you've had some people maybe that are complaining, I'd love to be able to talk to them. I can screen this even more, if that would help. But she's had so many people come in, she works there just about every day, so many people coming in, man, I hope that gets to be a facility, a storage facility. I have so many things to go, to go in there. And I know we've put a storage facility on Highway Z that we worked with, with Joe on to get that approved. They just keep filling up, guys. I don't know what, what to say. But we're already on that next one. And all of you guys were here before. We had 140 spots on the first go around of that, another 140. We already have 80 in that facility on the second part. The first part's 100% full. They just keep on, on coming. I don't know where they're, they're going to go, but they have to go somewhere for the county. But if you, okay, is, could you, could you blow this picture up and move it over? At the intersection, I don't have a pointer here, that's, that's my sister's quick shop that's there. Then you have the firehouse is the next one. And the next one to the right, if you can keep moving it, whoever's doing that. And then you can see that all of the... This was a home here, this was a home, three buildings that were here, and this building that was back here, this home is still, still in place. This is the one where I'm looking for C2 zoning as of what we're asking for at, at this particular time. But as you can see, we've, you can't see that right now, but we took down all six of those buildings that were a major eyesore. And I'll tell you, it looks a whole lot better now than what it did.
Can you come back to hear it and speak, please?
I've had a lot of compliments on it myself, to saying it looks so much better than what it did. And, and so I would like to, if I can have anybody that would be, I'll work with anybody. And I'm not unrealistic. If, if I had anybody that had names, or I'll give you my cellphone, and anybody that calls can call me if they like. Maybe some people don't, some people don't want to think of confrontation or something, but I'll gladly give them my cellphone. They can call me at any time, leave a message, I'll give them a call back if I'm not able to answer the phone.
Yes. I had met Mr. Keven at this property, talked about the U-Haul property probably a year or so ago, before you really started.
This is a different one than this one, but.
But I think we, I drove by what you're talking about. And that place looked like hell before you got in there and cleaned it up. I think that's a fair, a fair thing to say, okay? And really, in reality, I know nobody likes to have these things by their home. I have one by my home. But then again, if we don't allow people to store boats or RVs on residential lots in this county, they gotta go somewhere, folks. And, you know, he is providing a service to the residents. And there's, how many of these you have now in the county?
I have six of them in the county.
I'm not aware of the one, one by my home has been there probably 10 years, close to it?
Uh, yes, that is correct.
I'm not aware of any complaints that I've had on that facility, so, for what it's worth.
There is one more thing, if, if you would, if somebody would rather see something different, I have come up with, it's kind of a, another plant, it's a bamboo plant that I, that 100% blocks absolutely everything out. If somebody is, Mike, you shaking your head, you don't like that?
It just looks like overgrown weeds.
I, I, I agree. But if it's something that is, it, it is a 100% block.
It, it does. But weeds block stuff out too, and it.
It doesn't, you're right. I don't, I don't think it looks good. And that's the reason why I put the, or halfway mostly have white pines in there. The other half I wasn't able to get. But, but yes, I would like to, like to be coming back in here. But I would, I would enjoy working with absolutely anybody and seeing if they have other ways that would maybe be able to work.
Any other questions?
Well, I mean, just one more point. It's not the fact, I mean, I was in favor of the one on Z and N, which I'm not a big fan of these things to begin with, but I worked with you on that one because it's in a different location. But this is at a prime intersection. And if you want to call it transitional zoning, or whatever you want to call it, like something, it's not quite developed yet. But if you look at it, they just built a, a new firehouse. And there's, I know there's not a lot going on there, but by putting a storage lot there, nothing will go on there. And you gotta go, you're going past all the, it goes into a residential area and you gotta go past this, I call it a lot of junk and stuff, storage. I just don't think it's a good plan. Now, if you guys remember, there was a, your sister, the little house next to it, that's the vet or whatever, that, I don't know if she owns that building or not.
I'm not sure what you're talking about.
On the same corner, the DN double D. They were going to do a car lot, you guys remember that? And we had a bunch of people in there because they were going to do used car sales. And I don't think anybody knows this is going on because this project, they figured it was a done deal, I'm telling you. And if Mike was here, he'd verify that. We couldn't understand how they were building the berm, putting the gravel down, people were calling, we were trying to figure out why this is going on. And as he said, he filed, he filed the permits, but it, it looks like, like they're putting in a storage lot. That's why nobody's at the meeting, because they thought it was a done deal. And so I think we can look into this a little bit further. I'm not a fan, but that doesn't mean these guys are going to support it, but I'm just not a fan of it.
Sure, I, I understand that. And I know you haven't been a fan of any of those, and I understand.
Well, I supported your last one. I'm not, not wholeheartedly, but it, you know.
Right.
I, I don't think, but I don't know about this one.
Any other comments?
I'm, just looking at the, at the map is how that's laid out. I appreciate your point of that's a prime corner. But it looks like from the lot west of the one he's asking for, all the way to the corner, it's already C2. So all he's really looking to do is take that third lot at the far eastern edge of it and make that C2 as well. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct, at this particular meeting today.
Right. So we're not approving today.
No, I agree.
We're, we're not approving anything. And to your point, you can make your argument later on, because it's going to have to go through planning and zoning, then it's going to have to come before us. If he wants to put the storage lot in, he's going to have to go through that whole part there. I appreciate where you're at, but I don't have a problem with connecting those three lots together and making them all C2, because it goes from there all the way to the corner. It's contiguous in what we're doing already. So if he owns that lot, you've always been a big fan of letting the landowner do what they want to do with their particular land. And since it's not making that a commercial piece of property in the middle of a residential piece of property, that would be completely different. It fits with everything else that goes from there all the way back to the corner where his sister's shop is there. So I appreciate where you're at, but I don't have a problem with this.
And that, Robert, where's Robert at?
Right there. He's sneaking.
And, and what Mike has said, that is correct, right? That, that this zoning would have nothing to do with a permissive use of a, of a storage lot, correct?
It would not, in and of itself, approve a storage lot.
And this just puts his package together for commercial use, correct?
Should this zoning be approved, it would allow a range of permitted commercial uses by right. But any conditional use like a storage lot would have to come before this body. I could not use it as a storage lot with this C2 zoning. Is there any way you can blow the, make it bigger, so do the minus sign on there?
You mean zoom out?
Zoom out, thank you.
Okay.
Even zoom out further yet, please?
There you go.
And then put the X in the, the center of the roads, the intersection?
Slide it over to where DN double D are right in the middle?
Yes.
Looky there.
If you look at this, it's premature for, for a commercial. None of the other three corners that are on this are developed at this time. And that is exactly, exactly what I'm trying to do is, I would like to come back, this isn't this time, but I would like to come back and that doesn't, for a conditional use permit, for a temporary time being, to be able to have a storage facility. That's not this time, but in the future. It's premature for, for any kind of a development at this particular time. Nothing else has developed except that the, the store and the one just to the north of the little corner. And there, those, those are old, old buildings. Sewer does not look like it is coming out in that particular area at all either. When I talked to Duckett Creek, it, it just doesn't seem like that is something. And to try to be able to, to make some kind of money on the, on the property would be, is, is what I would be trying to do. Anyway, yeah, I think it's, it's just premature for any other kind of use on, on commercial.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else, any comments on this?
One, Mr. Keven's would probably like to make some money on the land anyway. And since Mr. Brazel knows all the wineries down that part of the world, I mean, C2 zoning, Joe, you could have at it, there'd be another, I'm sure Mr. Keven could set them up for, for someone else.
If, is there any way the county could, could at least pass my cellphone number on? It should be on the bill. If, if anybody would like to, at least, I'm a guy that likes to work with people.
Yeah.
And, and I would fully work with anybody that has any kind of an ideas that I could try to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure, we're not going to have any weddings here, are we?
Okay, that's.
Right there at the storage lot.
That's.
It's a storage wedding. It's a new thing. We're only doing it here.
Let's, let's move on to bill 4574.
Bill number 4574, request by Michael Herbert, sponsored by Mike Klinghammer. An ordinance amending the zoning district map of the County of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from R1E single-family residential district to A agricultural district as per application RZ 1803.
Any comments on this? Hearing none, let's move on to bill 4575.
Bill number 4575, request by Craig Takowski, sponsored by Mike Klinghammer. An ordinance authorizing execution of an easement to Union Electric Company doing business as Ameren, Missouri upon land at the southwest corner of the St. Charles County Airport for the new hangar under construction. Be it ordained by the County Council of St. Charles County, Missouri as follows. Section 1, the County Council hereby approves execution of the easement electric line attached to, as Exhibit A. Section 2, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after the date of its passage and approval.
Any questions? Hearing none, let's move on to bill 4576.
Bill number 4576, request by Bob Schnur, sponsored by Council as a whole. An ordinance authorizing the non-binding projected tax rates of the county for the general revenue fund and for various special funds, other than for the County of St. Charles, Missouri, for the year 2018, in order to develop the notice of projected tax liability to accompany the assessors' notice of assessed value, all as mandated by Senate Bill 711 from 2008.
Any questions on this bill?
Just for the assurances of our, our residents that are watching this, no changes to the tax rates for next year according to the memo that was attached to this.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, let's move on to bill 4578.
Bill number 4577, requested by Hope Woodson, sponsored by Dave Hammond. An ordinance authorizing execution of documents for receipt of grant funds up to the amount of $2,500 under the Capacity Building Awards Program from the National Association of County and City Health Officials, and further amending ordinance 17-113 by providing related supplemental appropriations to the budget of the Department of Public Health.
Any comments? Hearing none, now let's move on to bill 4578.
Bill number 4578, request by Ruth Rollins and Bob Schnur, sponsored by Council as a whole. An ordinance amending Section 115.710 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO, concerning the Personnel Administration Plan adopted by ordinance 17-110, including but not limited to benefits, and amending the 2018 budget adopted by ordinance 17-113 to add the new position of Business Analyst Manager and revise the 2018 budget appropriations for the positions of System Engineer II and System Engineer and Architectural Professional.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, let's move on to bill 4579.
Bill number 4579, request by Ruth Rollins and Bob Schnur, sponsored by Council as a whole. An ordinance amending Section 115-710 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO, concerning the Personnel Administration Plan adopted by ordinance 17-110, including but not limited to benefits, and amending the 2018 budget adopted by ordinance 17-113 to eliminate the position of Assistant Director of Workforce and Business Development and add a new position of Workforce Program Manager.
Any questions on that bill? Hearing none, moving on to table bills. Bill 4534, is, is that ready to come off the table, or?
No, that was, no, it's not.
Then we'll move on to announcements in miscellaneous. Anybody have any announcements?
Ah, yes. Mr. Cronin reminded me, being the good Irishman that he is. The ever-popular St. Patrick's Day Parade is coming up in Cottleville. That will happen between now and our next meeting. So we look forward to a couple million residents showing up. I'm only halfway joking, actually, when I say that. So I think they have the floats down this year. So it, it will be under 100 floats, I'm assured. So that way the parade will be done by 3, 4 o'clock in the afternoon. Again, I'm only halfway joking when I say that, so we should see. So we invite everybody to come out and. that, so we should see. So we invite everybody to come out and celebrate your Irish in Cottleville, home of District 3. We'd love to see you out there. Bring the family, it'll be fun. Any other items?
I have one other item, Mr. Chairman. Some of you folks may know the gentleman, some of you may not, but I regret to tell you that the city administrator of St. Paul, man by the name of Lynn Holloway, passed away unexpectedly weekend before last, okay, and good family guy from O'Fallon, and did a good job, had a real active career in his life, and then took it upon himself to help St. Paul the last 10 years. And I know he's worked with some county staff, and he'll be missed seriously in St. Paul. So, basically, condolences to his family, and I hope, Lynn, I hope you're up there watching what we're doing tonight, okay?
Any others? Hearing none. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion, second.
All there.
Aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.